Okay, calling the meeting to order at seven o'clock. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Can I have a motion? To approve the agenda, but the problem is, we have some tweaks.
Yeah, we're gonna make a discussion.
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
Okay, now in discussion, number six, which would be the pre-K update. They are actually six, so Bronson will be number six.
Student update will be number six.
Student update will be number six. And... I think that was it. As far as anybody else have any changes to that?
Sorry, you're not on the agenda.
Thank you.
He is now.
He is now?
Yeah.
Okay, so all in favor of the agenda with the change? Steven, I can't see your hand if you had it up or not.
Probably not there.
There it is.
Sweet, thank you. Public input and announcements. I do not have any sense to me. So skip that, skip that. Oh, I totally skipped what the bunch did. So on to approval of the minutes from 11724. I got your phone.
Good. I make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion, changes on it? I will be abstaining because I was not present. So, all in favor? Oh, we got hands up. Okay, thank you. On to our student rep.
Thank you. Hello. Since I have last met with you all, I formally introduce myself to the ninth and 10th grade classes. And I've made a Google form which I'll be sending out to all of them to request feedback from them. But, since my time having talked to them, two separate people have come up to me and given me suggestions. First one is that they would very much appreciate more high school electives because they're being locked into certain classes they don't really like when they... Just, like, to art classes when they don't really love physical art. And they would suggest to things like wood shop or metal shop... We have wood shop, but metal shop, cooking, more improv classes, possibly like making yearbook club into an actual class, a debate club. Then the other person also had class issues. They feel that they really don't get along with the current gym class situation and they think that a more relaxed, toned-down gym class like a yoga class or a... Something like that, a just more relaxed place to get your gym credits in would be beneficial for them.
As opposed to what?
Right now, we have lifetime sports, personal fitness, and weightlifting. Yeah, and they said that those classes were too competitive and people were angry in those classes. Next, update on some extracurriculars. Student council is having a dance this Friday for the high school. For Valentine's Day, student leadership team has put up some decorations in the lobby. Hope you guys have all seen them. They look pretty nice. Triem, the music honor society, is collecting can tabs in the main office for the Ronald McDonald House. And we're also putting on a movie sometime in the next month. Interact Club is praying Valentines for the lockers and we're possibly doing a fundraiser concerning flowers on Valentine's Day. More music stuff, singing Valentines, the chamber singers will be going around all of Rutland County, delivering Valentines for all of Valentine's Day. Ms. Martin is selling miraiachi ducks for... Profits go to the community society. Bistro is coming up in about two months where the honors vocal classes will be performing. Currently, the art exhibit is out on display around the entire school where all the art classes are showing off their work for the past semester. In about a month, music in our schools, all the elementary schools will be coming and we'll be having a concert. The two jazz classes at Moover will be going to UVM in March for a jazz festival to meet with other schools and we'll learn from their jazz professors. And then lastly, Stage 40 is hosting One X this year, or the regionals, and Pulman Kar Hayawatha will be performed in about a month. That's all I have.
Awesome, thank you.
Nice job.
Thinking about electives, that's absolutely something finance committee, when we're looking budget next fall, we can talk about that.
Yes.
Can you say again what was being performed?
Pulman Kar Hayawatha. Excuse me?
The Stage 40.
Stage 40. Pulman Kar Hayawatha. It's about a train journey in which it's mostly an ensemble piece and the rest will have to find out at the show.
Well played.
Good job, Bronson.
Good answer.
I have just something that I want to add. Yesterday, I read the paper and we actually have a football player on the Shrine Vermont team. So I want to say congratulations to Mason Boudry? Boudro? Boudro.
Yeah.
As he will be representing us as a Vermont player. I think it's the only one we've ever had on the team?
I don't know.
We have plenty of cheerleaders that are always on the squad, but... So I just wanted to add that in. Do we have any ideas of what we want Bronson to bring to us next month? Any... Do you have ideas of what you want to bring us next month?
Well, my ideas won't be... I won't give them to you till I meet with the entire 11th grade.
Oh, okay, alright.
You have to go to the show.
Okay.
And actually, the way things shake out, it might be early April, Bronson, if that makes sense.
Oh, that's right, with town meeting and stuff like that.
Because we do have a reorganization meeting and then we'll be at Tinworth. We'll talk during agenda building to see, but just tentatively thinking about early April.
We will keep you posted when you can come to the show. Alright, thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda is F-3, or F-26, restraint, seclusion report, and special ed update. So I'm assuming that's Coral?
Yep, that's Coral. And that F-26, this is another one of those ones where our policy calls for an annual report. And we did this about the same time last year, maybe it was January, but right around this time.
Yeah, so, hi everyone. As Brian just said, this is just kind of an annual report or check-in with you all on the status of the implementation of policy related to what we refer to as Rule 4500 or restraint and seclusion in schools. Much like the update that I gave you last year, we do have a fully implemented policy, which is our F-26. This policy really addresses, you know, the implementation of the actual pieces of Rule 4500. It's very, very lengthy. But the policy also addresses, you know, how we are responding to, you know, different behaviors that we're seeing in schools. So for those that aren't really familiar, which you might not be, Rule 4500 is the state board's rule which governs, you know, the rules under which restraint and seclusion are applied in schools. Our district, much like I said last year, our district does not embrace the use of seclusion. There are a lot of reasons for that. But in general, the use of seclusion with kids, it can actually be a very traumatic experience and so we do not endorse its use in our system and we haven't in quite some time. Restraint, on the other side of the coin, is... It is a statute that, in some cases, when a child presents with physical acting-out behaviors that are determined to pose an imminent risk of harm to either that child or others, then there are some scenarios for which trained, certified staff might step in to apply a physical restraint in order to stop that behavior. Luckily, we're in a place where those scenarios are very, very few and far between, which is not necessarily what I hear from other districts even nearby. This year, just to give you a rough estimate, we... For the school year, we've had so far seven episodes where a restraint had to be enacted. These are generally on children at the pre-K to sixth grade level. It's very unusual to see a restraint be applied in a secondary student. There are some reasons for that. And in nearly all of the scenarios, the restraint was applied for generally a minute or often less. So they're very... They're very quickly-moving applications that just allow us to diffuse a physical behavior when that behavior poses an imminent risk of bodily harm. So luckily, we're, you know, in a place where our policy's well-implemented. I would say that we have a pretty robust reporting system. What I mean by that is that when a restraint occurs, there is a very lengthy written report that has to be filled out and that report is scrutinized generally by at least three administrators, including Brian and myself and usually the building principal as well, so...
And if I can throw something in there, the form is required by the state of Vermont.
That's correct.
So that's a standard that's a given everywhere. The form coming to me every time is not. But that's something that we decided in district. Why shouldn't I be aware of every time there's a restraint? Especially when you're reading in the news about schools that have a very high number of them, you know? And that's not just been one area in the state that's been a couple. So we decided we don't want to be any of those folks who are popping up in the news. So let's all keep a close eye on it. And we have a lot of conversations around how important it is to be looking at things as a team. Because if I'm the only one looking at things, I'm going to miss things. If we're looking at things as a team, we're more likely to make sure that everything is working appropriately. So that's something we put in place above and beyond a couple of years back, just to make sure.
The district continues to use a program called CPI, which stands for crisis prevention and intervention, as its mainstay of training staff in how to properly de-escalate and/or restrain if a situation came to that. As I've said, there are very, very few scenarios where that is the case. And CPI continues to be our program that we've embraced for training staff verbal de-escalation techniques and also what they call personal protective techniques. So how to protect yourself if you happen to encounter an assaultive student or person. And CPI is on the Vermont Agency of Education's list of designated acceptable programs. So we have stuck with that program. It's been in the district a long time and they continue to update and publish and revise. So they definitely seem to stay current with the training needs facing schools. Questions on that, please?
Seven incidences this year? I presume that's something we track?
We do.
Is that up or down or on par?
It's actually less. It's a little bit less than past school years, but not statistically significant. But it is slightly less, yeah.
So maybe last year, halfway through the year, might have been 10 or 11?
Yeah.
Do all teachers get this training?
Not necessarily all. We make it available to anyone who would like it. Sometimes there are employees who, because of their assignment, they... We need to get them priority trained just because of who they're working with or who they're supporting. But it is available to everyone. Not everyone takes advantage of it.
And it does tend to be more of our special ed staff end up having the training and more often are paraeducators who are working with students who might require that.
Yeah, absolutely.
We did do, at the high school, we trained all of our staff in the verbal de-escalation, not the physical.
We, just to your point or your question, Denise, we train our own trainers. So what that means is, a couple times a year, we will send people off to go get trained as a trainer so they can then come back to the district and certify our people. So we're a little short right now on trainers, but we're working to sort of figure out if we have anybody else that wants to go do it. The instructor training is very, very costly. It is about $5,000 a person, so it does add up. But we do train our own trainers here, so it's a good thing to do it. More questions on that part? Okay. The next piece that I just wanted to talk to you about this evening is just, you know, sort of some special ed updates. One of the pieces of information I can share with you tonight is some good news. We... MRUUSD had been selected for what they call targeted monitoring by the state of Vermont. It is part of a monitoring process. All districts are monitored. There's different phases of it. What the government is monitoring is really compliance with various regulations. There are several of them that have to be monitored. So we actually just received back a clean monitoring report. So that meant that we had no further reporting obligations for this school year. So that's not to say that we're taking a little break, but monitoring is a very, very intense, very time-intensive process. So to have our monitoring report come back clean was really positive. Next year, next school year, as far as I understand it, our school district is assigned to the cohort that will have what they call cyclic monitoring. So that is basically where the state agency is picking a couple of indicators and asking us to report our compliance on those. That process is a little bit more simple than a targeted monitoring. So pick that ball up and run with it in the summer or fall. So, yeah, so that's what I have on that side.
How often does that larger, more in-depth version occur? Is it...
Really good question.
Three years, five years?
It's... So it's... Yeah. It's supposed to be on a cycle.
And that was new, though, right? That had just been developed?
Yes and no, so I'll back up. It's supposed to... There's supposed to be a cycle, Nick. So some forms of monitoring are every year, some are every three. Back in the old days, the agency of ed would actually come down to your school and go through your filing cadence. That was the old days. Like everything, they face staffing shortages and things like that, so they had gotten a little off-cycle with their monitoring. So it did become more of a random, and I think they're working that out.
Trying to figure out if it's every three, then you can plan that, ooh, this is my third year.
Yeah, they've assigned cohorts now, so that's how we happen to know next year that our draw is up for the cyclic monitor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so on to our Wallingford Board vacancy. Wallingford Select Board has actually gotten back to us with Patricia Bowen would like to fill the seat until election. So...
And I think worth noting, she's running unopposed for Liz's one year, wrapping up the term. So I just think that's good for folks to know, that she is running unopposed for that seat.
For the, yeah, the rest of the term, which is a year.
Yeah.
So, I guess, all in favor of...
Well, you need a motion.
Well, yeah, I make a motion for Patricia Bowen to be appointed to the Wallingford vacant seat. Any more discussion?
Pat, do you want to say anything?
I was gonna say, do you want to say anything?
You don't have to, but you can if you want to.
If anybody has any questions of me, I've been a local person for a lot of years. I grew up in Wallingford. I went to Wallingford Elementary School from kindergarten through grade six. Actually, the kindergarten room was brand-new that year, from 1969, was when I started kindergarten. But anyways, I've been along for a long time. I love our community and I'd love to help support the schools and join this board in meeting those goals.
Alright, thank you. All in favor?
Point of clarification on the motion is to finish out until election.
Correct.
Yes, it's to...
Until...
To fill until town meeting day.
This town meeting?
Yes. And then she is running unopposed to finish out the year, a year of Liz's term.
Given the timing, it does seem funny, given the timing, but once there's a vacancy, statute tells us 30 days to fill it, so...
Right.
So we're filling it and it's not going to really...
But she's not... And I don't mean to talk like she's not sitting there. But Liz has a year left.
So March to...
March.
Next March.
Yeah.
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
And that's what she will be filling at election.
She's on the ballot listed as the only person running for that vacancy.
So we have to appoint somebody?
Yes.
But then town meeting day's going to happen and somebody will get elected. So we appoint just to get to the election?
I'm sorry, I'm dense.
It doesn't make sense.
So to take it out of context, if this was October, we would be appointing from October to March.
Yes.
But the weird thing is, is that we're appointing from February to March.
Right.
Just because of the...
And then the position is for one year?
For one year. So it's actually...
It's a three-year term.
It's the exact same thing that I did. So I took BJ's spot for one year.
Yeah.
And then I had to get re-elected again.
Okay.
So Liz still has a year left of her thing. So Patricia will cover until...
Seems like a lot of work in February, right? But it's the way it's...
No, I make... I got it now. I got it.
Okay, so all in favor? Congratulations. So just go get sworn in. Have her email me and tell me that it's done and then you will be good for the 22nd to come to the annual meeting.
Yeah, and...
Because we don't really have much going on in between anything else.
And there's not much of a role for folks on the 22nd, but it is a board meeting that's sworn, so, you know...
I will... Email me with your address and stuff like that and I'll let you know all the committee meetings that are coming up for February and you can come to them. We'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And, alright, so the next one is, we need to accept the resignation of Cindy Van Dean as she has accepted a position at the district.
In the district.
In the district.
I'll make that motion, that we accept her resignation.
I'll second it. Any discussion? So now we'll get a hold of Shrewsbury.
We'll do it all over again.
We'll do it all over again. It's going to cut really close to town.
So that's what I was just going to ask.
To the voting.
Do we have to do 30 days?
Statute requires that we fill the vacancy. I think it becomes interesting that we could run that... Yeah, we can run the clock out and somebody will be elected. So technically, 30 days from now, there's an election.
Election will be...
And, you know, we can plan action for day 30, but the election's going to happen. So I think we're safe to...
We still have to go through the process.
Yeah, we'll reach out to the select board. I do think we need to be prepared just in case, and I know you got something to add, Steven. If there is a write-in, fantastic, we have somebody. If there's not a write-in, there were no contested seats in Shrewsbury. Steven's running for his own spot because he was appointed.
Yep.
You know, Cindy was not up, so there was nobody running against, you know, for that spot. So we could just have a scenario where nobody's running. Steven?
Well, we need...
And there's nobody listed on the ballot?
No, we need to get that empty.
That's my question, given the timing. This is going to be, I guess, a Shrewsbury Select Board question.
Yeah.
Is that there's only one open position, as far as I know, on the ballot.
Yes.
So we need to get the ballot changed.
Oh, yeah, and I don't know...
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Do they have time to get ballots?
If not, then we'll have to put something out to Shrewsbury saying that they could write in.
Well, if...
Well, because right now, I think when people are voting the second day, they're running...
They'd take your seat, yeah, yeah, no. And that's a good point, Steven.
So it needs to be changed so there's actually two seats?
And what we'll do...
In Shrewsbury?
Ideally, yeah.
What we'll do is, our standard practice is, we work up our letter and we send it to the Select Board tomorrow. So they'll get really clear notification tomorrow. And I would bet that they have time to get their ballot changed. Maybe they've printed ballots already, but I don't think they're going to hit any... Between now and then, they can probably call a special Select Board meeting if they needed to, to approve a different ballot, if that's what they need to do.
If not, they can... They at least have time to make the adjustments, so there's actually two seats.
But worst-case scenario... Worst-case scenario, if they can't change the ballot, they can do some work in Shrewsbury to find interested parties and they can recommend somebody. Worst-case scenario, we get to our meeting on the 7th after town meeting day and we appoint.
We have to recommend.
And we're within statute still if we appoint on the 7th. So it's probably the most interesting timing ever that our 30 days would be, you know, basically up right on election day. But we'll reach out to Shrewsbury Select Board and we'll follow the process. And even though the process is not incredibly convenient for the timing, we'll follow the process and we'll be prepared.
Okay, so we'll get that out.
So Steven, you're running for a three-year position?
Yeah.
I believe that is the length of the term, yes. Because it's a filled position that was vacated by Sam Green.
Because Steven was appointed to finish the last year of that term. So he's running for a new three years.
Okay, so if someone takes... I'm just trying to sort this out in my head.
Yeah.
So if someone takes Cindy's position...
It's only the rest of her term. She has a year left of the term.
Okay.
So if we appointed somebody the day after town meeting day, that appointment would only run for a year?
Right, okay, okay.
No, good question.
Well, because I was concerned that we didn't... That you don't want both Shrewsbury residents being... elected.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know what I'm saying? At the same time, you're saying length of time.
They will stay staggered, correct, yeah. No, good, good.
And we don't want somebody thinking that they're running against Stephen.
Right.
Yeah.
Because it needs to be clear that there's two positions now.
We'll, we'll get him that information.
Um, I don't even know if we vote. Did we vote?
I don't know yet.
No.
Okay, so all in favor of accepting Cindy's resignation? Okay, thank you. Now, a moderator for the twenty-second. Stephen, did you have? Somebody?
Yeah, I, I reached out to after the last meeting, Shrewsbury's town moderator, Eldrick French. And he is, is interested in helping out if we're still looking for someone, so Eldrick French from, from Shrewsbury, who moderates like the town meetings and those sort of things.
And, and I think a couple of folks may have heard from Andy Richards Peel. He was willing if folks wanted to appoint him. So two, two, I think, sounds like folks with experience.
Um, how do we want to, yeah. Do you want to do them separate? Separate votes? Or how do we want it?
We need some motion on the table for discussion, so anybody who wants to make a motion.
I motioned for Eldrick French.
I'll second that.
All right, any more discussion on it? All right, all in favor of Eldrick being our moderator on the twenty-second? All right, thank you. We will send him an email, or?
Are you comfortable, Stephen, I can, I can reach out to you, and we can kind of coordinate, and see, and if he wants any support getting ready for that, is that okay?
Yep, that sounds great.
Okay. Can I throw a quick note in?
Yeah.
I just got a note, Shrewsbury can't change their ballot. So we are going to need to appoint somebody then, and we'll work with Shrewsbury Select Board to figure out who that would be.
Okay. Well, it makes that a little clearer.
Yeah, it's nice to have that clarity. But we probably would have figured that out.
As clear as mud can happen at this point in time in the stage here. Um, all right, so we're on to Personnel Committee.
Holy cow.
Yeah.
That was quick.
I'm flying through this.
Be right with you. Okay. We have some contracts to offer. We have a con, I'll make a motion that we offer a contract to Cynthia Van Dean as support staff. One point oh full-time equivalency. Discussion. All those in favor? Thank you. Next. For Sydney Mosier as a support staff, one point oh full-time equivalency, as a para educator in Clarendon. And I'll make that a motion. Discussion.
Former student, which is always awesome to see.
Former student rep.
Yeah, former board rep.
On the board.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Next is a letter of employment as after-school program staff for after-school program site director, and that's for Bo Remus, and I would make that a motion. Discussion.
We, we've been trying to hire that site director for the middle high all year, so it's great to finally be filling that position.
Okay.
So that's the site director for middle high school, junior high school?
Correct.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Uh, next is support staff contract for one point oh full-time equivalency for custodian for Scott Wallet, and I would make that a motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Scott is great. He's been driving for us this fall, and we're, we're thrilled to have him on for more.
All those in favor? Opposed? Staying? Okay. Next. A long-term substitute position as a special educator, one point oh full-time equivalency for the district. And I would make that a motion for Tabitha Lozo.
Second. We, we love it when we have para educators who are interested in becoming certified educators, so it's definitely a need for this long-term subposition, so we're thrilled that we can support her.
Clarendon, right, too?
That's Clarendon, yeah. So, long-term subposition, because somebody will be on leave, so.
Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Next is a resignation from Wendy Wentz, who actually resigned. We, we received her resignation back in January. We tabled accepting that resignation. And so at this point, I would like to make a motion that we accept Wendy Wentz's resignation.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Okay. And then, lastly, is another resignation for Mercedes Poirier.
There you go.
Good job.
I spelled it phonetically. So I'll make that a motion.
I think worth noting, Mercedes is incredible, and we appreciate having her. She is still working with us part-time. So she was unable to do full-time employment, so she is working with us as she can. So we're lucky to have her a little bit that we still do.
So the, the reality is, she couldn't fulfill her contract as it was constructed.
Correct.
And so.
So she is no longer under contract.
Right.
When you're pulling her in, and correct me if I'm wrong, Coral, as a substitute, basically, as much as we can.
Yep. Okay, so did I make that motion? Yeah, you seconded it. Right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? I'm hoping that's it.
Next meeting.
Hmm? That's it.
Next meeting.
Next meeting won't be until April.
To be determined.
After reorg.
After reorg, so, all right. To be continued.
Yes.
And reorg if we needed to, we could call a march meeting at that point.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm done.
Thank you.
Oh, there's more than one.
All right, on to policy.
That's you?
Yeah, I know. I'm trying to remember here. That flu wiped out brain cells. All right, so we had sent B six, B sev, B seven, and B nine.
B eight.
B eight, sorry, and B eight. For first read. And our timeframe has passed. So. I am going to, you have to do a second read, so I'm going to make a motion, I'm going to try and lump them. I make a motion to adopt B six, B seven, B eight, and B nine. And they are changed now. Which is just they've moved to section B.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's B nine?
B nine was currently D twelve. Which was, hold on.
I don't have a B nine, I got a B five.
That one was employee harassment, Lynn?
Yeah. But this says B five, employee unlawful harassment.
Should be B, B nine.
It should be B nine.
If the poli, if the policy at the top says B five, I'd say typo.
Okay, it does. Well, actually, it doesn't say anything, it just.
Oh, it's named B nine, but at the top of the page it says B five.
Yeah.
But it, it should be B nine.
I see it, and I'm changing it right now.
Okay, thank you, Jody.
That's fine.
It's incorrect.
I just.
No, good, good to check, because we do have a B five, so we absolutely want it to be B nine.
Yeah.
It's changed on the policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
You good?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So with, with the edit.
With the edit.
We want that policy to be nine.
Yes, we.
Or B nine.
Make sure everything says B nine. We're going to do bingo soon, so, um, all right, all in favor? Don't forget, Stephen's up there. Thank you. All right. Next meeting is next Tuesday at five-thirty. Because we're still on our same thing, so. That is it for policy. Buildings and grounds, we have a Timoth update?
Our Timoth update is, we're still in communication with the folks at the church around getting a contractor out for an asbestos remediation plan.
Okay.
So, and that, you know, hard to tell how long that will take. It might, might be easy to get the contractor in for a day to do what they need to do, but it might take, you know, a week or a month to come up with a plan, so.
Okay.
That might, that might be our update for another month or two. It might be.
I have no idea when they have another thing.
Um, I, I don't think there's one scheduled, but we absolutely need to get one scheduled. Um, we've got, we've got a lot of projects that summer ends up being a really good time to do some of the medium-sized projects, and we got a lot that we're just waiting to get approval to move on. So if we can have a B and G meeting before reorganization, I, I think it would be important to try and shoot for that. Because if we wait till reorganization, and then we plan a meeting, you know, we might be calling up contractors in April.
Do you usually have, is Buildings and Ground usually on a Thursday?
I, when, when has that been meeting lately?
I don't have any.
I don't, I can look.
The Tuesdays and stuff were, for their, our, our committee chair, I think, is still in, in.
No, he's back.
He's back?
Yeah. Um, well.
Last one was a Wednesday.
No, he hasn't been set up to be reelected in this coming thing. He's got, he pulled him thing out, but he didn't return the card to the.
Okay.
They, they may change that, so.
Let's schedule, and I, I can run it, Buildings and Grounds on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh? Let me just check this calendar.
And if we do something, if we do something in February.
I can't do that day.
If we do something in February, and Buildings and Grounds has a recommendation for the full board, what Tim can do is, Tim can start figuring out what we need to do to put things out to bid, or to start working with contractors. And we can bring it to the full board when, when, we can bring it to the full board, but I, I don't want to wait until March to start that process. I, I'd like to get Tim something so he can start setting the groundwork, and then when we bring it to the full board, he'll bring you quotes.
Who's on B and G? Can you do Monday, the twenty-sixth?
I will be gone.
I was going to say, are you gone?
That means you can't do the twenty-seventh.
That means you can't do the twenty-seventh either. Um, I can do Monday, the twenty-sixth, if we do late five. You, I'm not looking at you, Paul, because I know you're not going to be here, and it'll confuse me to look at you.
I'll be thinking about you, though.
I'm sure you will. Huh?
He told me when he looks back.
Bruce, are you? Nick, are you on it?
Uh, it's Matt, Doug, Josh, Paul, Bruce.
All right, well, let's schedule it for the twenty-sixth at five. I will let Matt know, but I will step in.
And you need to let Josh know.
Yes, and I will let Josh know, yes.
We can, we can work up a pretty, I think the, the agenda that was used at the last meeting can be used again. We can just bring the same list of projects to figure out which are the priority ones that Tim should move on.
Okay.
That's really all we want to know, which are the priority ones that we want Tim to move on.
Okay, that will work. All right, so we'll set that. And I will make sure I email Josh and let him know. Stephen on it? No, okay. I'm still confused on what Stephen's on, and what I'm on.
I think finance and negotiation.
Yeah.
Were the two.
Okay, so we have that set, so we'll do a meeting on the twenty-sixth. Okay, community engagement?
Our last meeting was two weeks ago. Our next meeting will be the twenty-second before our.
Before the annual meeting?
Before the annual meeting.
Yep. Okay. And we're going to do here in this room, because the annual meeting's in the library.
Yep.
Unless the committee, I keep thinking I'm on a normal. Okay, so negotiations.
Yeah, tomorrow we are meeting with the union, so not a negotiations committee meeting, but we are meeting with the union again. Uh, things are moving on? I don't know if Len? Len? You're the only one. Anything, anything you want to throw out there?
Nope.
Um, Patricia, can you add that to your list? While I have you, you're still right on there.
Yes.
Okay, add that to the list. I'm emailing you the list of the committee meetings as we're going, so yeah, if you want to come tomorrow to that, you can attend.
Four fifteen?
Can we though?
As soon as she's sworn.
Don't we need, we need an agenda item to add her to a committee, if we're going to do that, which we don't have.
Okay, well, never mind.
And I think we don't, you know, we don't need a quorum, so.
No.
I think we're, we're, we are fine to do what we need to do with negotiations, because we never need a quorum to meet with the union. But reorganization, we definitely want to add somebody. Is that, were you going to say something, Len?
No, that's exactly.
Although if she gets sworn in, any board member can sit in.
You could join, yeah.
Well, I was just thinking, she could, yeah, she wouldn't, I mean, she can sit, come and observe.
And I don't know how useful that would be for.
Negotiations.
Yeah, yeah.
Who else is?
Me, you and Matt and Josh and Cindy.
Was Cindy.
Yeah.
And Stephen, yes. Oh, yeah, Stephen.
No, Stephen.
Okay.
Okay, so tomorrow at, what, four fifteen?
Four fifteen.
All right. Oh, yeah, sorry, Stephen, I forgot you were up there, if there was anything you wanted to add about negotiations, how things were going.
Uh, no, this one's good. We're good, we're good to go.
Yep.
Okay, so on to the ad hoc committee. The members of the ad hoc committee are Bruce, Len. The members of the ad hoc committee are Bruce, Len, Josh, myself, and Nick. Totally spaced, the one that I had set up for yesterday. And I'm scheduling the meeting for Monday, the 12th at 5:00 here. And we will do our charge.
Timeline.
Timeline, like, set up the whole thing.
Can you get us an agenda tomorrow then? So we can warn it.
Yeah. Yes, I can. I will get that to you tomorrow. But do we have to have it warned if it's not set up yet? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I will.
Because you're, you're going to have, anybody can call the meeting to order.
Yes.
But you got to call the meeting to order to have the meeting.
Yes.
And then you'll do what you need to do to, yeah.
Okay. I'll get the agenda tomorrow. We also have a community member that wants to attend, which is Cindy Van Dean. So she wants to, as a community member, she will not take action or anything, but she will be present. So I will send out the agenda tomorrow. It'll be pretty late because we'll just start establishing. But that's ad hoc for right now. Okay. So on to finance. We don't have Liz.
Nope. If nobody else wants to, I don't mind reading them. Yep.
Okay.
So we have payroll warrants, FY '24. I have a regular warrant in the amount of $618,687.77. I have another regular payroll in the amount of $628,424.86. That totals $1,247,112.63. So I would ask that someone knew that we adopt that as presented.
I'll make.
Or approve that.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion on it? Okay. All in favor?
Okay.
Then we have pay orders. General fund in the amount of $113,342.31. Officials, the amount of $4,415.50. Another one from the general fund, $34,728.38. After-school program in the amount of $1,139.11. The lunch fund in the amount of $45,540.10 totaling $199,165.40. We have student activities for Mill River in the amount of $2,883.65. So I would, I would ask that we have a motion to approve as read.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on it? Clarification? All in favor? Okay. Thank you. Um, I have no idea when the next finance.
Nobody does, so.
Nobody does?
Not yet.
We'll figure that one out. Okay. Do we have any other legal business that we would like to discuss? Agenda building, which our agenda for the next meeting is a rebuild.
Yeah. Reorganization would be our next agenda. So that's a fairly easy one that I can throw together and have ready to go. I had a note and I think, I think this came from Len. I could be wrong. Help me, help remind me, I wrote down code of ethics and A policies. And I'm trying to remember, I think we were talking about something and we said, oh, wouldn't that be great to be part of our reorganization? If we were having folks like maybe sign off on the code of ethics?
Josh was talking about that.
Okay. But the A policies, that's the part that I'm really fuzzy on and I don't remember why.
I think that was because our A policies is.
Is.
Those are board.
The section.
Were we going to just review them? We were going to do maybe a really quick, hey, new board members, these A policies are the ones you really need to be aware of. Was that what we were going to do?
That might have been.
Okay.
I just remember the code of ethics being.
Yep. Yeah. Now that you say that, I do remember Josh had mentioned that.
Yeah.
I can thank you for that because I had forgotten what that note meant, which makes it not a useful note. I, I will get that worked into the reorganization plan there. We, we will likely have like pay orders. So we'll do a couple of routine things that we have to do, but I won't plan on any presentations for that. Since we got a little extra time, I think it would be worth thinking about April, or sorry, March then April. March, we had planned Timoth. I know we could have, we will have some new board members. I wonder if we want to.
Can we just change that to here?
I, I would be interested in what the board wants to do. Yeah.
I'm just thinking new members, just keep it, do it here for that first meeting, the reorg meeting.
Well, reorg is going to be here.
Yeah.
But then the meeting after reorg would be Timoth on our schedule.
Yeah, that's fine.
What's the date on that?
Okay. Uh, March 20.
I could have just known that. Last year's 23rd. It was 25th, no one had to wear.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm going to be there.
And then in April, in April, we would start doing a little bit of catch-up and just to give you a heads up, sports would be coming back in April. We'd have Stan with some of those fun routine business office-y ones, risk management and audit stuff. Pre-K, I wonder if we want to reschedule pre-K for that April meeting.
Yeah.
And we can, we'll have plenty of time between now and then, but I just think we've gotten a little off schedule, so I thought it wouldn't hurt to think about what's coming so we can get back on schedule.
Yeah. I mean, we need to put her in there because it's not her fault that she was out of schedule.
So that's less needing an answer and more me just saying that's where we're likely going, if that makes sense. Then we hit spring break.
Woo!
I've got what I need for agenda building.
All right. That's good. Okay. Um, do we need an executive session?
Nope.
All right. Consent us to adjourn at 7:58.
Great. Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.